The time is six o'clock. Ask everyone to rise if we do the pledge of allegiance and the invocation.
Face the flag, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the middle with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, we just come to you tonight. We thank you, God, that we have another day, God, that we are able to, to be here, God, and I just thank you, God, for, for all the blessings you give us. I just pray, God, that each day that we just not take those for granted, and, God, that we look for ways to serve you and to show others, to be Christ-like, God, and I just pray that tonight you give us the wisdom to get through this meeting and to do what's best for our city, and I pray all these things in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you all for being with us this evening at this time. With the clerk call roll, please.
Mr. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Sherrill.
Here.
Ms. McGee.
Here.
Ms. Pogue.
Mayor Kathy.
Here.
Let's move down the business agenda. Item number one, oh, sorry, public comment. Johnny, you didn't catch me on that.
I was about to.
You were about to. This is the public comment time. This is anything that is not on the posted agenda. You may address the board at this time. Hearing none, we'll move down to the business agenda. Item number one, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of July 1st, 2024.
I recommend approving.
Second. Have motion second. Roll call, please.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill.
Yes.
Mayor Kathy.
Yes. Item number two, discussion and/or action regarding accepting or rejecting the city manager's report. Mr. Delay, good evening, sir.
Good evening, everyone. My report's on attachment number two, if anyone has any questions.
I recommend approving.
One second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Kathy.
Yes. Item number three, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting the payment of the purchase orders for the city of Atoka for the month of June 2024.
Those are on attachment number three. Anyone has any question?
No one has any questions. I recommend approval.
There you go.
One second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill.
Yes.
Mayor Kathy.
Yes. Item number four, discussion and action regarding adopting or rejecting resolution number 2023-13, authorizing the application for financial assistance from the Rural Economic Action Plan, otherwise known as REEP, to assist with the transfer station improvement project. Mr. Delay, this go to you, sir.
I think we got a grammatical error there. It's resolution number 2024-22.
On the 2023?
On the 2023-13.
I just, I just noticed that.
Give you that, apologize.
Mr. City Attorney, will we just adjust that as amended in when we make our motion?
Yes.
2024 what?
Dash 22.
Dash.
It's correct on your attachment, which is number four. So if you just look on that, what this is, this is the yearly REEP grant that I apply for through SOTA, and I'm wanting to apply for again this year, and this year wanting to put in for a new buyout for the transfer station that we've talked about in previous meetings. This would be one way to help pay for that.
Okay. I recommend approving, amending the, so, resolution number to 2024-22.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mayor Kathy.
Yes. Item number five, discussion and/or action adopting or rejecting ordinance number 605, an ordinance amending part 11 Parks, Recreation and Cemetery to the City Code of Atoka, Oklahoma, 2020, section 11 dash 201 Rules and Regulations for City Lake, Atoka City Code, providing for repealer and servability. Do I hear, is this, this is the items we talked about on, on improvement of the,
City Lake.
City Lake ordinances or rules and of operation and that kind of thing out there at the City Lake?
Was there anything added to that? I thought there was something added. Was there not anything added, Jimmy?
I don't believe we did. There was discussion.
Wasn't on my notes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there was discussion on some different items, but nothing was, nothing else was approved to change, to my knowledge.
Okay. Okay. Well, I'll recommend approving.
Okay.
One second.
Have a motion second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Kathy.
Yes. Item number six, discussion and/or action declaring ordinance number 605 an emergency.
I recommend approving.
Second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill.
Yes.
Mayor Kathy.
Yes. Item number seven, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting ordinance number 606, authorizing the sale of certain real estate, or real property, sorry, from the city of Atoka to the Atoka City Industrial Development Authority. Who's on this one?
You guys are selling some property to ACIDA. The property is what used to be the old nursing home that we tore down a few years ago. That, a few lots there, and then there's some property the city had over here next to the railroad track that is a joint's property. ACIDA bought from Three Daniels about a year ago, and so we're trying to combine that under ACIDA so that ACIDA can work on developing that for housing. And then the extended stay has some taxes owed on it that ACIDA's going to pay for, but y'all are going to give that to ACIDA in exchange for the payment of those taxes, so.
Okay, I recommend approving.
Second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mayor Kathy.
Yes.
I did have a question. I'll go back on, on the rules and regulations. Remember I asked the officer about CDIB holders and fishing license, that they don't have to have fishing license? I did remember that. I mean, it doesn't matter to me if it doesn't go in there, but they don't have to have fishing license, so.
No, they don't have, for any body of water, do they?
No, not, not right now.
No, so there'd be whatever standard for all parks and wrecks.
Be the same.
Yeah, well, they didn't, I didn't get that last week. I don't think they understood, I guess,
Okay.
what the question, when I said that they didn't need official license, that they just needed to show their CDIB.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, then. I'm, I'm good with it.
Okay. Item number eight, discussion and/or action to award Miller Asphalt the overlay job of Ruth Avenue from 69, Highway 69, to the end of the road, including labor and materials of two-inch hot mix asphalt in the amount of $29,700.
I recommend approving.
Second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill.
Yes.
Mayor Kathy.
Yes. As we move down, is there any council comments? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Kathy.
Yes. Moving to our next meeting of the evening, the Atoka Municipal Authority. Would you call roll, please?
Ms. Pogue. Mr. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Sherrill.
Here.
Ms. McGee.
Here.
Chairman Kathy.
Here.
Thank you all for staying. This, again, is the public comment time. This is anything that's not on the posted agenda. You may address the board at this time. Hearing none, we will move down the business agenda. Item number one, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of July 1st, 2024.
I recommend approving.
Second.
Have a motion second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill.
Yes.
Ms. Pogue, sorry, Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Chairman Kathy.
Yes. Item number two, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting the payment of purchase orders for the Atoka Municipal Authority for the month of June 2024.
Yeah, I recommend approving.
Second.
Have a motion second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Chairman Kathy.
Yes. Move down. Is there any trustee comments? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Chairman Kathy.
Yes. Yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and, I'm gonna change up the order a little bit. We're gonna do the industrial authority license. It does have a executive session on it. That way, if anyone would like to exit, they don't have to sit through all. So, next meeting will be the Atoka Industrial Facilities Authority. Would you call roll, please?
Mr. Turner.
Here.
Ms. McGee.
Here.
Mr. Sherrill.
Here.
Ms. Pogue. Chairman Kathy.
Yeah, here. Okay, this is public comment time. Again, this is anything that's not on the posted agenda. You may address the board at this time. Hearing none, we'll move down to the business agenda. Item number one, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of June 17th, 2024.
I recommend approving.
Second.
Thank you. Motion second. Roll call, please.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Chairman Kathy.
Yes. Item number two, discussion and/or action regarding accepting or rejecting the sports complex manager's report. Irwin, is this one you this evening?
Yes. So, the guys are working on getting recovered from the season and getting the fields and everything taken care of and brought back up. We've got several tournaments scheduled for the fall, and the, we're gonna, we will be adding shade to the new T-ball fields over the stands and the dugouts. We are installing the batting cage. It's a big batting cage, and a small playground in that north alleyway that was, the small playground was, multiple parents were requesting something for their other kids to be on right there by those little T-ball fields. And then the batting cage and the playground has been, we use the funds from the banner sales to improve those things, and so we certainly want to appreciate all the banner sponsors. So if you see somebody's banner out there, know that that's going to help improve our facilities for our, the players' experience, really.
That's good.
There you go.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Chairman Kathy.
Yes.
Thanks, Carol.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Item number three, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting the payment of purchase orders for the Atoka Industrial Facilities Authority for the month of June 2024.
I recommend approving.
Second.
Have a motion second. Roll call, please.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Chairman Kathy.
Yes. Any trustee comments?
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Looking for a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill.
Yes.
Chairman Kathy.
Yes. Moving to the next meeting of the evening, the Atoka City Airport Authority Trust. Would you call roll, please?
Ms. McGee.
Here.
Mr. Sherrill.
Here.
Ms. Pogue. Mr. Turner.
Here.
Chairman Kathy.
Here.
And this is the public comment time. If there's anything that's not on the posted agenda, you may address the board at this time. Hearing none, we'll move down to the large agenda that we have this evening. Item number one, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of June 17th, 2024.
I recommend approving.
Second.
Have a motion second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Chairman Kathy.
Yes. Any trustee comments?
Make a motion.
Hearing none. Do I hear a motion? I hear a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill.
Yes.
Chairman Kathy.
Yes. As we move into our last meeting of the evening, the Atoka City Industrial Development Authority, would you call roll, please?
Ms. McGee.
Here.
Mr. Turner.
Here.
Ms. Pogue. Mr. Sherrill.
Here.
Chairman Kathy.
Here.
So we don't do this one?
No, that was just in your packets. That meeting was already.
Oh, okay. Previously expressed some interest in knowing just kind of.
Yeah, that's what.
What it was. Okay, well, I'm glad I got to see it. Because I didn't forget to go to the meeting, so.
Okay. So this is the public comment time. If there's anything that's not on the posted agenda, hearing none, we'll move down to business agenda. Item number one, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of July 1st, 2024.
I recommend approving.
Second.
Have a motion second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill.
Yes.
Chairman Kathy.
Yes. Item number two, discussion and/or action regarding accepting or rejecting the economic development director's report. Good evening, Carol.
Good evening. We had a big month with, kicked right off with the opening of Green Lion, and I really appreciate the council members coming and along with Chief Batten and Governor Stitt and multiple state, county, and regional representatives, along with some neighbors. And it was a really good opportunity for people who had concerns to tour the plant, and they all had their concerns answered and addressed, and everybody went away with a much better feeling about the plant. I had one person who told me, you know, you read this stuff and you think that it's going to be these big smoke stacks with all this black stuff coming out, and he said, that is not what this is. He said, this is very impressive, and I'm really glad that it is here. Their wages are very good. Our wages in Atoka to qualify for the small business incentive in 2018, when I first came here, our, it was $12.46 an hour is what you had to pay an employee plus 50% of their health insurance to be able to qualify for the small quality jobs. That is now over $20 per hour. So we have really made strides in the past several years on increasing the quality of life for our people, and that is our goal, to be able to give people more in their life. So I'm very proud of that. I'm very proud of you guys for doing that. We are working on the engineering, on the infrastructure, on the heavy industrial park from the PREP grant, and the big thing on that currently that we are working on is not only a road into the northwest section, but a new water line that will increase our flow and pressure there to support the other industries that are coming in. We were chosen as one of the communities for a critiquing site visit. So when we do a site visit, it all starts with an RFP, a request for proposals. So the Choctaw Nation did an excellent, probably one of the best economic development conferences that I have attended in a long time. And it started several weeks ago. We were given the opportunity, the ones that were chosen, and there were four of us, to submit for an RFP that they designed. It was based on a possible future RFP. And we did the whole process from submitting the RFP to them coming here for a site visit, to us doing the community tour, the tour of the, of the plots that we were proposing for this project, and then it carried on into a two-day conference. And it, they had speakers from all the utilities and incentive areas, and it was just a very excellent conference. We will be getting written feedback, and I always love being critiqued, as much as I don't love being critiqued. It's a way for us to know how we, you know, this is really our first opportunity for somebody to give us a grade and say, you know, and I told them, I said, I will appreciate any hard edits on RF, RFP that we send out. And I got a little bit of feedback on some of the stuff that had never dawned on me because I'm so used to seeing it from my side of the table, and it was really refreshing being able to have that deep, honest input from the site selector side. So that was great. We're continuing to work with the magnesium plant. On tourism side, we hosted a regional meeting for how to make your community film-friendly. The film industry in Oklahoma is turning into a very big economic development tool. It really positively affects your economic impact in an area when somebody comes and does a film. Movies on the Green are going great. We saw Secondhand Lions the other night, and there was a good turnout. We're seeing a lot of families that, you know, can't, they can't wrestle their kids in a movie theater, but they can take them there and they get, you know, the candy shop is staying open later on movie nights because they're selling a lot of candy. And we have a great snow cone machine or snow cone vendor that's there every time consistently. So it's just been a great thing. The next one is August 2nd, and it's going to.
So the kids make laughs around the screen while the movie's going on, burning the energy off?
Yeah. They roll down the hills and they're laughing. I mean, it's the greatest thing, sitting there watching a movie and hearing kids laugh. The next one is going to be the movie Sing. It's going to be on August 2nd. We're not going to do one in September, but in October, we're hoping to show Hocus Pocus closer to Halloween, and then that will probably be the end, if we can just get the weather to hold off till the end of that. Everybody really enjoyed the fireworks show. Everybody really enjoyed the fireworks show. We got a lot of really positive, I know Danny and I both got a lot of positive feedback on that. And Hartzell Entertainment, Caitlin, Daniel, Hartzell, brought her students out and they performed in that hundred-and-one-degree temperature in full costume, and they just really put on a great show. On the sports complex, I think we pretty much covered that on the last meeting, but it, the season has completed. We've got fall tournament scheduling. And the splash pad is continuing to be a big hit. There are so many people that are really thankful that we did that. And I want to thank you guys for your persistence in getting that in. I want to thank Danny for all the grants he wrote to be able to get that in and all of that work. And it's really making our area out there a really nice visitor's center. We've got some great stuff going on out there.
I was out there for two hours today and my grandson didn't want to get wet.
What about Grandma? Did she get wet?
I never know on my granddaughter if we're going to be there five minutes or two hours.
That's awesome.
All right, so that's, that's my report for this evening.
Okay. Carol, what are the lighted, big lighted boards that promoting concerts?
I saw that.
And it's one right in front of my house.
Well, and what I, what makes me more, it, it, so it, I believe.
Big, they're on wheels. It's a, one's right there on Randy Daniels' property across from my house.
Road construction starts soon.
Yeah, it's lighted.
Except, I mean, it's, it is the signs that say road construction starts soon, except I don't think they've changed the screen.
Oh, and it says.
Because it's talking about concerts in Muskogee.
Yeah, in Muskogee. Oh, okay, so that's what you think it is?
I think, I think they just didn't get.
There's one up there for Dr. Hartens.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just think they didn't get the, I saw that today and I thought.
I'm like, okay.
Those are weird words because that is one of those signs. And I think they just haven't changed the words yet.
When I saw it, I didn't think it was DOT that put it up.
Well, I think DOT subcontracts that out.
Okay, okay. Well, I was wondering.
Because I know when you go through.
What concerts we're promoting?
Yeah. Not, not ours at this time. But when you, I know when you go through Kiowa, they have those big road signs.
Okay.
And they're usually saying something not road, but, and I think what they did is they moved those in.
And just need to.
And just did not change the words.
Okay. All right. Do I hear a motion to accept the report?
I recommend approving.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Chairman Cathy?
Yes. Item number three, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting the payment of the purchase orders for the Otoka City Industrial Development Authority for the month of June, two thousand and twenty-four.
I recommend approving.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Roll call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Chairman Cathy?
Yes. Item number four, discussion and/or action on purchasing certain property located in Folsom Heights addition in abandoned railroad railway, including a, including and near Lot Four of Block Fifty-two, original townsite of Otoka, Oklahoma, from the city of Otoka, for the sum of ten thousand dollars.
This is the land that you are purchasing from the city of Otoka, where the old nursing home was and over here.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion is second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Chairman Cathy?
Yes.
Is there still a public road through there?
There was never a public road.
Well, I see people still going.
Yeah, I mean, it is, it is a road, but it was actually, wasn't that the abandoned rail spur?
Oh, okay.
Is what that was.
People still using it.
Oh, yeah, they do. And that will, more than likely, that will turn into an actual road.
Oh, okay.
Item number five, discussion and/or action on approving the amended application for the Otoka City Industrial Development Authority's Building slash Vasad Improvement Incentive Program.
So, along with being critiqued, I also reviewed our application form that we had approved back in, I think it was nineteen or twenty. And realized that, you know, when we approved that, it was, okay, we need to keep it fluid and see how it's going in the future. And we did need to make some changes on it. And so, I just, I made those changes and sent those out to you guys. It's nothing substantial. It's just clarifying some stuff on the application.
Yeah. No, that was in our packet last, last time. The corrections were. I recommend approving.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Chairman Cathy?
Yes. You and your executive session.
Got a lot to read tonight, Mr. Turner.
Item number five, executive session.
Excuse me, did she have?
Would you like to introduce yourself? I'm sorry, I should have done that from the very beginning.
So, I'm Katie Carroll, and I am the South Area Field Rep for Congressman Josh McKeen, so.
Thank you for joining us.
All right.
Stay for the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Get busy going down the agenda. My apologies.
Okay.
Okay, item.
What in the?
Item.
Agenda. I mean.
Item number one, executive session is authorized by Title Twenty-five State Statute, Section Three-O-seven-B-four for confidential communications between council and its attorney concerning the possible default on a lease agreement recorded in book nine thirty-one on page three seventy-four of the Otoka County Land Records and potential efforts indoor litigation to acquire certain, retain possession of property located in the heavy industrial park, section one township to south eleven east, range eleven east, Otoka County, Oklahoma. That's item number one. Item number two, an executive session is authorized by Title Twenty-five State Statute, Three-O-seven-C-eleven. All nonprofits, foundations, boards, bureaus, commissions, agencies, trusteeships, authorities, councils, committees, public trust, task force, or study groups supported in whole or part by public funds or entrusted with the expenditure of public funds for the purpose of conferring on matters pertaining to economic development, including transfer of property financing or creation of a proposal to entice a business to locate within their jurisdiction if public disclosure of the matter discussed would interfere with the development of products or services or if public disclosure would violate the confidentiality of the business, specifically to update the Otoka City Industrial Development Authority Board on economic development projects, including but not limited to hotel project and industrial park projects and for the possible real estate transactions that cannot be publicly disclosed due to the confidential nature of the business relocation. Now, all that said.
Your second grade teacher would be so proud of me.
Do I hear a motion to enter into executive session on item one and two?
I'll make that motion for one and two.
I'll second.
Have a motion is second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Chairman Cathy?
Yes. Thank you all.
Thank you all.